Good evening. Can you hear me in the back?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Good evening and welcome to the 2022 Fountain Hills Council Candidate Forum. I am Betsy La Boye, your President and CEO from the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce. I would like to welcome Brian Begner, the Senior Strategic Account Manager of Government Sector from SRP and the new incoming Board Director to the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and share a message of our sponsor, Salt River Project. Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which this stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, good evening, everybody. It's an honor to be with you here tonight. As I said, my name is Brian Begner. I'm the Senior Account Manager for the Government Sector at SRP. I have the pleasure to work with all cities and towns in SRP's service territory. SRP is a nonprofit company that serves reliable and affordable power and water to more than 2 million customers. We are proud of our partnership with the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce and the leadership of Chamber's CEO and President Betsy La Boye. We truly appreciate the Chamber's efforts to serve as a platform for the business community to hear directly from candidates. It's essential for voters to understand candidates' priorities to make lawful decisions during or after elections. Again, on behalf of SRP and the Fountain Hills Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors, thank you for joining us tonight. Have a good evening.
Thank you very much, Brian, and thank you to all of you for joining us this evening. We are delighted to provide this opportunity for our residents to get to know their candidates in this positive and informative candidate forum. A special thank you to our friends at SRP for sponsoring this event. Programs like these are made possible through their support. It has also been our pleasure to partner with Civic Affairs from the Fountain Hills Civic and Cultural Association and the Town of Fountain Hills for tonight's forum. In recent years, FHCCA and our Chamber, with SRP serving as our lead sponsor, present these mayoral and town council forums. Two years ago, this was a virtual Meet the Candidates forum. We're thankful to be together in person tonight. Additionally, a big thank you to Tom Lindsay from Toastmasters for running the title portion of this evening's event. I would like to now introduce Michael Hoops. To speak, Michael is currently serving on the FHCCA board as the Chairperson for the Civic Affairs Committee. Michael, welcome to the podium.
Well, good evening, everyone. I get the distinct pleasure of moderating the activities this evening, which for the first half of this, you can read the questions, so my John will be able to read comparatively. A little bit about FHCCA, I'll read our mission statement. Develop, promote, operate programs and activities that will preserve and enhance the cultural, civic, educational, and social qualities of the town of Fountain Hills. Civic Affairs goes back to 2010. Women started participating in these kind of activities. As you said, there have been mayoral debates, there have been town council forums, we've been involved with the school district, the sanitary district, bond issues, so a whole host of things have kind of risen up in the town. We've helped to try to get the citizenry educated. A little bit about FHCCA, the website will tell you there are 16 items under that umbrella. We subset a couple of the activities, so it's down to 14. Many of you are in some of these groups, but it's things like Public Art Committee, Munch and Music, Community Band, Community Chorus, Dark Sky Association, the Community Garden. We could go on and on. On the civic side, it's Civic Affairs, which is what we're doing this evening. It's the Fountain Hills Leadership Academy. Several of you have been in there. Tom and I are both graduates of that program. I went through that back in 2018. And Vision Fountain Hills is also under that umbrella. So there's a lot of things that FHCCA gets involved with in the town. You've got a computer. Go to the website, ilovefountainhills.org. And you can see all about the organization. So I'm looking forward to this evening. Again, the whole idea of this is for the candidates to be able to espouse their views to you. The Fountain Hills Times is here. They've done a great job with the series. If you don't get the Times, spend the bubble. We get the Times, read what's been in there. The candidates have given written answers to that, to a whole series of questions there. But tonight, they get to verbalize and articulate their views. So I'll turn it back over to Betsy. Thanks.
Thank you, Michael. I'm going to ask everyone's help this evening and keep into a few rules. You knew that was coming, right? So we did just learn from the resident that they were told they could submit questions tonight, and that is not actually what's happening. There was a survey online for three weeks where you could submit questions, and so we want to honor that. And I'm sorry that this information was shared. And so if you have a question for your candidates, please write it down. We have a basket over there. On your way out, leave it. We will make sure that our candidates get all of the questions, and if they choose to follow up, they will have all of your questions. So within your program, you have a section for notes, and so please, if you have questions, go ahead and leave that with us, and we'll make sure they get them, all of our candidates. Our candidates are your neighbors. They are volunteering their time for the government of our community. This forum is an opportunity to hear their perspectives for our town. Even if you happen to disagree with a statement, please, 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 no outbursts or commenting from the audience. If you wish to applaud, just know that your candidate may lose time to speak, as each segment is really limited for them in time and it'll limit their response to questions. Candidates and guests, our timekeeper, Tom Lindsay of Toastmasters Fountain Hills, will hold up a yellow card when the candidate has just 15 seconds left to answer, and he will hold up a red card when their time is completely up. As you can see, we're on a very tight timed program to give you as much information as possible, and any applause or outburst will interrupt the candidates with their time. I have to share, if there's any unruliness, we will have you removed. We have two MC SO officers here, and we have a zero tolerance policy, meaning one outburst, and we will kindly escort you out. Because of our zero tolerance, if our guests collectively are not able to abide by this, we will take a five-minute recess. We will clear the room, and then we will continue without an audience. I know we're not going to need to do that. We want this as an opportunity for all of our candidates to share their perspectives, and we want this as an opportunity for all of our candidates to shine, again, whether you agree or not. So please, let's all remain in the room together and not get to the point where we need to take that five-minute recess. We are recording the program, as you can see, and we will air it on the Chamber's YouTube channel as soon as it's finished within the next few days. And so we will also post it on our Chamber Facebook page so that you know that it's live, meaning the recording is now live for you to see. Finally, please turn on your cellphones or turn them to vibrate, and now let's introduce our candidates for the Fountain Hills Town Council. Join me in welcoming Cindy Couture. Give a round of applause. Brenda Calabianakis. Alan Skillicorn. And Hannah Toth. Okay, you got it all out of your system, right? Now, our moderator, Michael Hoops, will go over the schedule for this evening and take it from here. Enjoy.
Thank you, Cindy. Just for the audience, we had a random number generator drawing early this evening, so the candidates will not be answering each question in the same order. They each have a sheet in front of them, and so sometimes they'll go first, sometimes they'll go second, sometimes they'll go third, and sometimes they'll go last. So it might make it harder to follow along, but that way they're not always following or preceding the same people. What we're going to do to begin with is opening statements. Each candidate will have two minutes to make their opening statement, and we will begin with Cindy.
Okay. Hello, Fountain Hills. Thanks for coming out tonight. I really appreciate it. I'm Cindy Couture. I'm running for Town Council, obviously, and I'd like to talk about my qualifications. I was a teacher here in the high school for over a decade, so I really know a lot of people. I have been actively involved in our town's civic and volunteer affairs since 2004, when I moved here from Seattle. I'm also the only Town Council candidate at this forum who's had that much experience serving in our town. What does that mean? That means, like you, I love this town, and I know you love this town, and I'd like to share that. How do I know that? I've worked alongside many of you for numerous volunteer events over the past 18 years. I've seen a lot of you make a difference today, Halloween in the Hills, the fairs. I used to do bread at the Guanas, the Thanksgiving Parade, the Dark Sky Festival, and I even helped paint the baller lights in the park. I've also been highly involved with the schools. I loved teaching, and I spent 43 years doing that. I'm in Town Council. I've attended dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings. I've watched dozens and dozens and dozens of meetings. I've also been a dedicated reader of Fountain Hills Times, where we all get our information about the town. It's thank God for that. Okay, so I'm going to tell you that I know we want to keep our small-town feel. I'm going to go really fast and say, most of us like Scottsdale, but we don't want to be Scottsdale, and that's it. Thank you.
Okay, we're done. Good evening. My name is Brenda Calabianakis, and I too am running for Town Council. Dislike in buying stocks, past performance can't guarantee future results, but it is very useful to take a peek. Let me tell you a little bit about myself. I'm a lawyer. I graduated law school in 1988. I was an associate editor for our law journal. I won the Lawyers Publishing Award for Counter-Track Law. I graduated 18th in my class. I passed the Mards and was licensed to practice law in the United States Federal Courts in Illinois. Thereafter, I began my career as a prosecutor in the state's attorney's office. I put bad guys in jail, okay? After years of service at the state's attorney's office, I formed a criminal defense firm, and I helped people get out of legal trouble, okay, on the other side of the spectrum. Eventually, I became the founder and president of a successful marketing company in Chicago. I employed people, gave great Christmas parties, and I signed the front of the people's checks. I am currently an active member of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, and my service includes having served as a divisional staff officer, the Secretary of Records. I play saxophone in the Coast Guard Band, and I'm a member of the prestigious Division 10 color guard. Earlier this year, I earned the Department of Homeland Security's Outstanding Unit Award, and in March, I earned the Coast Guard, not Auxiliary, but the Coast Guard Meritorious Team Commendation for my service. I'm running for council to bring a constitutional conservative, common sense voice to the town council. As you can surmise, I have a unique skill set that I think would be useful to the people of Fountain Hills. When I practice law, I would bill $400 an hour for my services. If the people of Fountain Hills would like me to represent them, I will work for you for $400 a month. That's a pretty good deal for Fountain Hills. So if you want to be a good shopper, vote for Brenda Calabianakis.
Good day, Alan.
Hi there, Ron Mills. My name is Alan Skillicorn. I'm a candidate for Town Council. So Ron Reagan had post-legal note cards, so I've got my own notes up here. And I mention Ron Reagan because he referred to the United States of America as the shining city on a hill. Well, ladies and gentlemen, that perfectly describes Fountain Hills. I chose to live here over Scottsdale or Tempe or some other place, and I really want to preserve that small-town character. My wife and I love it here, and she's actually sitting right over there. We attend church here in Fountain Hills. We walk our dog here. I hike in the mountains around us. This is our home, and this is our forever home. I'm running because there's a liberal majority on our Town Council that does not share the same vision for Fountain Hills. They want us to seem more like Portland or Seattle than major. Well, I am an independent of special interests, and I value people over politics. I am committed to protect the values and traditions of our industrious community. Citizen safety, their pocketbooks, are just the cornerstones of that guarantee. Now, what is this struggle really about? Liberals want more. It's about whether the agenda can sustain the traditional trifecta of higher spending, higher taxes, and even higher debt. We see this in roundabouts, expensive studies, and radical mask mandates. Now, talking about change is easy. Getting the town to fully embrace open and transparent government? That is not easy. We must open the books. We must be more transparent with our finances. I propose every dime online in real time. Now, while making public records transparent doesn't achieve anything on its own, you cannot improve, you cannot measure. So let's start with public accountability, and let's improve from there. My name is Alan Skillicorn. I am a conservative reformer, and I humbly ask for your support for Town Council.
Good day, Aaron.
Hi, Fountain Hills. My name is Hannah Toth. I was born and raised here in town, and I hope to have a part in helping Fountain Hills reach its full potential while still preserving that wonderful small-town atmosphere. In order to do that, I feel I need to take a moment before we dive into the issues and our solutions to address you, not necessarily as a candidate, but as a resident. My political involvement is no secret, and while most issues we come across on council are not very specific, I recognize that one's foundational beliefs are a really good way to judge how they will govern. I am a Christian conservative. I'm not ashamed of who I am, and I make no effort to hide that from the people of Fountain Hills. I do not lie about my values because I take pride in them. Cindy Couture, however, cannot say the same. She will tell you she is a nonpartisan candidate in this race, willing to crush the idol to work with bold thoughts. If this were true, I do not believe Ms. Couture would be pushing literature that says one and done. Be sure to vote for only Cindy and no one else in a race that has three seats open. The Democrat Party put up one candidate because that is all they need to keep, the majority. This is not about picking the three best people for Fountain Hills. This is a political game to them. Ms. Couture believes, for example, that if you did not receive the COVID-19 vaccine, that you should be in prison for attempted murder. Now, whatever your opinion is on the vaccine, you can understand why that might be a red flag for someone running for a position of power. I understand this is uncomfortable. I don't like doing this. But trust me, I cannot stand by as someone on this stage continues to lie to her potential constituents and asks for your vote, claiming to be something she is not. And if you don't believe me, you're welcome to email me, hannahtoth29@outlook.com, and I will provide the information that proves what I'm saying to you tonight. I apologize for this and would like to focus on the issues now. Thank you.
Let me just make a comment. That's the last time we're going to be applauding or be writing answers. Let's let each person say what they want to say, and you can judge it on its own merits. We're going to move on to the sixth, round one, questions. The order for these will be the same as the opening statements. Question number one, it's in your program, the town's future. What do you personally perceive to be the biggest issue or most important challenge facing the town of Fountain Hills within the next five years? Again, we'll start with you, Cindy.
Okay. How many of you, I have a question. How many of you are happy living here in Fountain Hills? Raise your hand. Okay. That's how I feel, too. I moved here in 2004 after one trip to Fountain Hills, and I grabbed it. So I think the most important challenge is to keep with the survey that was taken this year, and the report was that 98% of us love living in Fountain Hills. And so if I'm elected, that will be my job, to safeguard our town, to keep that percentage of people happy living here. Implicit in that challenge is watchtalking growth. We don't want to become busy Scottsdale. We don't want high-rises blocking our views. We don't want congested traffic. We do want some growth, but we have to be careful with that growth, and we have to make sure we control it. We have to make sure our infrastructure doesn't take a hit. We need to make sure our neighborhoods are not adversely affected, and if I'm elected, my job will be to protect this town and to keep that happiness a percentage high, being willing to go for 100%. Thank you.
Next up, Brenda, same question. 90 seconds before this question.
Thank you. What seems like an obvious answer to this question would be the roads. They are disrepaired, and they are getting worse by the year. We have a $60 to $80 million shortfall in funding. However, the question will be answered later, so what I'd like to do right now is just talk about what the average citizen cares. The average citizen doesn't care about Brenda's perceptions. To the average constituent, the biggest issue is their biggest issue. The biggest issue is the pothole for their house. To the next person, the biggest issue is the fact that every time it rains, their house is in danger of flooding because of improper stormwater drainage management. My point is, I'm running to be an advocate for the people, for all the people. If you're having a problem with the city's responsibilities, that should be investigated and fixed. It seems to me the only time people get satisfaction with the town helping them is going to the Town Council meeting and telling their tale of hardship and frustration. Many times, Brady offers him help, which is good, and there's a big "pumayama," like you just did something really good. That's nice, but we must develop a mechanism to handle all the townspeople's concerns, just like they came to the call to the public. Each complaint must be addressed with decency, respect, and urgency. If elected, I would change the bureaucracy to be more proactive with the people's needs and have the people feel like the town cares about them personally.
Alan?
Great. Answer the question with priorities. Do we continue status quo, or do we continue big spending on roundabouts, sidewalks nowhere, a granite staircase, bigger, taller buildings? Or do we focus on needs, not just wants? So the peril to this is what we see going on in D.C. We see that Biden's Build Back Growth is causing more inflation and hurting the middle-class families. They spend in projects to the state than here in Fountain Hills, just on a somewhat smaller scale. So it's all about priorities. We need to set aside more money in every budget here and catch up on the collective road repairs. We need more police deputies in neighborhoods. We need to fill vacant commercial spaces, not build new, taller buildings with more vacant spaces. But we also need to listen to the people. So when they say they want common sense regulation against commercial addiction centers moving into the neighborhoods, well, darn strike, we need to listen to them. And I've been saying this over and over again, neighborhoods are for families, not for commercial addiction centers. It's time to start listening to the people of our town.
Aaron?
Revenue shortfalls are the biggest challenge facing Fountain Hills. On top of this, we have broken relationships with our state legislature, with our Chamber of Commerce, our business owners, and frankly, our residents. Without a proper willingness to work with stakeholders and advocate for them to the higher levels of government when necessary, especially when concerning items that may harm local municipalities' ability to generate revenue or keep our communities safe, we cannot hope to make lasting positive change in Fountain Hills. The state legislature proposed a bill before signing that would decrease municipal rental tax. This would be an approximately $400,000 hit to our town's current revenue and is expected to be revisited in the fall session. With Fountain Hills facing an approximately $60 to $80 million backlog for carrying for our roads, every revenue dollar counts. I intend to sit down with our representatives and do the necessary work for Fountain Hills to try to protect that budget that we have as our nation starts entering recession and also create some ways to further increase revenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's move on to question number two, which revolves around the town's budget. This will yield $26.1 million. In order that we do not have to cut costs, assuming that means services in the future, expound upon a few of your ideas to the town to grow revenue. On the other hand, are there current expenditures in the budget that should either be reduced or eliminated? We've got a new order here, Brenda. You'll lead us on.
Thank you. As we all know, Fountain Hills does not have a primary revenue tax, and for the record, that begins raising taxes. Therefore, since we rely on sales taxes for revenue, we should make Fountain Hills a business-friendly town and promote assistance to our residents to locate here. Unfortunately, the current administration has not been friendly to the business community. Since we will cover that in the next question, let's concentrate right now on the spending. The current administration seems preoccupied with want-to-have spending items that make for greater revenue-putting ceremonies. These items include building unsafe roundabouts and unnecessary relational stairs, by the way, crosswalks that go unused by pedestrians, expensive shady structures, quarter-million-dollar parks that the residents don't want, and the list goes on and on. The boring but critical must-have jobs include fixing the darn roads, stormwater flood mitigation, fixing our community center that leaks, by the way, and repairing and upgrading our infrastructure to meet modern standards. They must stay priority. If elected, I promise to scrutinize closely the want-to-have projects, and so I see significant improvements on the need-to-have projects. You may not see my photo in the Fountain Hills Times, but I'll be out patching hot holes and talking to people about what should be done first. If we listen to the people, put their priorities over politics and special interests, we will get things done that need to be done, and people will be satisfied with their government. We must do right by the people.
Cindy?
It's interesting how different people see things with different filters. I look at what the town has been doing on a two-string budget as amazing. Our town's needs are going to expand as inflation rises. It is a problem. The town runs on a relatively fixed income, and it's based primarily on sales tax. So we need to make sure that we help businesses as much as we can and increase that sales tax so we don't have to ever have a primary property tax. and increase that sales tax, so we don't have to ever have a primary property tax. We must support current businesses, and I think we're doing that a lot more. We just started a new economic development department, and the lady in charge has been going all over and talking to businesses and helping, seeking to encourage businesses to locate here. So I think we're going to see some improvement there. I think we need to also continue to do what we've been doing. We have, in the last few years, brought in an incredible amount of free money on grants. And our town staff has found all kinds of federal and state money to help us fund the things that we've been adding to. Yellow things just are creeping. Okay. But lastly, we do need to work on just the need-to-haves for a while, because we're breaking even, and we need to make sure that we can fund those important infrastructure needs micro.
Next up, Hannah.
I believe that in order to be good stewards of the sales tax money that we currently mainly depend on, we have to differentiate between wants and needs. We have to identify projects that do not need to be immediately funded, could wait a couple of years. Again, we are entering a recession, and it's time to be smart about our funds. While the staircase may be beautiful, we cannot afford to put money into a study for a project we do not have the money to fund, once we've studied it. Those numbers change over time, so it would make sense to have funds saved up for capital projects and then do the study, and then we can start building, so those numbers actually stay the same. I also intend to start a thorough examination of contracts that the town has entered into. First of all, we need to make sure that we're doing what we paid for. As we know, we started an MCSO audit over four years ago now, I believe, and we are still waiting for the results of that. This is just one example of a contract that we need to take a very thorough look into. There are opportunities for cost reduction. We just need to have the right person find them. So I do intend to sit down with the town manager and financial director in order to go through our town projects and those cost reductions, therefore equate revenue that has been found.
So Biden inflation has hurt drivers. It's hurting single parents. It's eroding decades of savings for seniors. That out-of-control spending and inflation hurts Fountain Hills, too. So we have some of the best parks and amenities in the valley, all without a property tax. And I moved from Illinois, I know Boo Boo's Whistles, and we have some of the worst property taxes in the nation there. I used to pay three percent a year in property taxes. Here, it's right around half a percent. And property taxes hurt people. It is one of the most insidious taxes there is. When you pay off your home, you still have a mortgage payment-sized tax bill to pay. When you build your dream home and then retire, the tax man chases you out of that home, so you have to downsize. And if you're a young person, don't even get started, because the tax bill is so hot. So all of this applies to us here, and it's also why property taxes really should be lowered or eliminated, especially for seniors. Now, here in Fountain Hills, we do not have crumbling roads because we haven't taxed enough. We have crumbling infrastructure because the current liberal majority has intentionally prioritized shiny new things and an expensive brand-new building, wasteful spending, instead of doing the work they needed to do. So of course, tax-and-spend liberals want to tax and spend. I'll elect the three of us, and we will find new ways to save money through innovation, thrift, and hard work.
All right. Question number three. This deals with our local business community. Some of you have alluded to this, but let's get into some details. What needs to happen, in your opinion, for the local business community to reach its full potential? And we'll begin with you.
An overarching theme that you may notice to several of my answers is the need to clear the red tape. This is because when speaking with business owners and residents in town, I often hear their concerns about town imperiums and their ability to operate, renovate, or to grow. We as council members need to stop restricting the business community's ability to be successful. One example of this being the overburdened sign ordinance. And I believe the new council's first priority needs to be revisiting and ending this ordinance. I would also suggest that when fulfilling town contracts for goods and services, we tap local businesses and vendors before reaching out beyond our state and town to keep as many of our funds as possible stimulating the local economy. I have noticed in town council meetings, it seems we put roadblocks in our contracts so that a local business may not be interested in providing bid. So again, that comes to looking at our contracts, what our local businesses are able to do, and prioritizing keeping that money right here in Fountain Hills.
Cindy.
Our town's business community must work miracles to survive the crazy beast and famine of population changes in Fountain Hills. In the winter, businesses have to ramp up for the happy onslaught of all our smilberg population. Then, in the summer, they must shrink their business back again, because we all go on vacation to cooler clums. Commerce is reduced. To keep up with that, the business must be really on top of things. I would strongly suggest that new businesses in town work with our Chamber of Commerce. Our town mentors that they use are amazing, and they will teach the secrets of enduring as a businessman in Fountain Hills. They need to talk to people like Phil Redockus of Phillips' Building Station. He's been here forever. How does he do that? You know, to see other restaurants come and go. And our chamber, it's one of the best in the state. They offer classes. They offer mentorship. And they teach people how to work with their businesses. So we need to make use of their knowledge to help our businesses succeed.
So this is the biggest reason why I'm running for council. So I'm an entrepreneur. I used to be a board member of my old Chamber of Commerce. And a few years ago, I watched this town shutter businesses, padlock tennis courts, and bully builders' businesses trying to skip by. Then, this liberal majority took away the most effective advertising tool they have for a small business, and right as they're trying to get back on their feet. So talk about poor timing and being clueless to the economic reality that they're going through. So I haven't even heard rumors that our town is hard to work with from businesses all across the valley. Ladies and gentlemen, that rumor and that attitude changes on day one. If you elect the three of us, we will declare Fountain Hills open for business, and we will bring business back to this town, while the thriving downtown and we will see more sales tax revenue, and you want to see us being a destination for small businesses and entrepreneurs.
Great. Thank you. People who go into business, entrepreneurs, have a life of what the Fountain Hills revenue stream. They are an important factor in the future of our town. They provide various goods, services, and they must be respected. To know how to assist the business community, it helps to have run a business. As a former business owner, I can relate and be a very valuable asset for business owners to reach their full potential. Did you know that Fountain Hills has a bad reputation for being business-friendly? You probably figured it out by now. For the business community to reach its full potential, we have to change the way the town does business and elect a business friendly mayor and town council. Developers sue this town made headlines this week in the Fountain Hills Times. The developer linked his breach of contract and that they were dealing with them in bad faith. This agreement was made by a previous mayor and a previous town council. Fountain Hills should honor this previous commitment. The sign ordinance hurts our businesses. The sign ordinance is not business-friendly. I think it's great that we offer an electronic way to file for licenses and permits, but did you know it's prohibited to take the paperwork to town and file them with a real person? Many business owners are older and are not computer savvy. Why does a town force people to learn how to use a computer to open up a business here? It's ridiculous, and that's not business-friendly. If elected, I will work with the Chamber of Commerce, our business development manager, the mayor, the town council, and the business community, and we will earn a good reputation. Fountain Hills will finally be open for business.
All right. Question number four, community living experience. I'm sure everyone of you sitting by me there agrees that Fountain Hills is a great place to live. However, not all of us agree on the priorities going forward. For these candidates, what would it be you to run at this time? And what are your top priorities to augment the living experience in Fountain Hills? And we'll start with Al.
So I'm independent of special interests, and I value people over politics. I'm committed to protecting the values of our industrious community and also will protect our mountain views. I oppose higher-density housing, and I'm concerned about stormwater management protecting against erosion and water runoff. Ultimately, it's about pocketbook issues, specifically their hand in your pocket. I will not stand by and watch our loving town slowly slide into California. The policies are not working. Baking storefronts, panhandling, commercial addiction centers in our neighborhoods, mask mandates, neglected infrastructure, and giving out a twenty-one-percent raise to our town manager, unacceptable and really people that are not paying attention to what the people want. If you agree with me, I urge you to support Hannah, Brenda, and myself, and we'll turn this town around.
Hannah.
I was motivated to run for town council due to what I heard and continue to hear most often from my fellow residents. We need more youth in Fountain Hills. Our schools are well under capacity. Our businesses struggle to make it through the summers. We are running low on working-age residents that already challenge higher market. Residents don't want to become Scottsdale. We want to preserve our unique appeal, but at the same time, become a stable community that has the necessary demographics to continue standing on its own. Yet, I've watched our town government continuously make decisions that say Fountain Hills is closed for business. If we want to keep our schools, if we want businesses to come here, we need to make some serious changes. This idea is not a new one. In fact, I'm sure many of you here have said it yourselves. This brings me to the second reason that I chose to run, which would be what I perceive to be our current council's majorities' inability or unwillingness to listen to the will of the residents. A healthy community means a local government that looks out for the needs of the people and acts according to their concerns. But there is a continuous pattern of citizens having to inject themselves into town issues because the council fails to listen to their voice, no matter how clearly they make it. The daybreak we're ever done with sober living homes ordinance for the permanent primary property tax being good examples of these. The people come to the council, ask for help or protection from those they voted for, and are consistently turned down. It is no secret that the majority of residents come here to Fountain Hills to enjoy peaceful existence. If elected officials start listening, people will need to come out of retirement for their voice to be heard by people they hired to represent them.
Thank you. I was a precinct community member, and I was living a very active lifestyle. Over a year ago, a community leader approached me and said, "Based on your resume and your enthusiasm, we would like for you to consider running for town council." He said, "We're facing many problems here in Fountain Hills." So I started a listening tour. I talked to the people. The one recurring theme was, people are moving here from liberal states that have been ruined by liberal policies. They told me they are seeing the same telltale signs coming to Fountain Hills. I recall speaking to a cashier at the Ace Hardware back a year ago at Dash's Plaza. She told me her and her husband own a very successful business in California. Through overtaxation, numerous regulations and such, their business was struggling. The final nail in the coffin was a restrictive sign ordinance. Does that sound familiar? It cut their business down forty percent. They sold it. They got the heck out of California. And now, instead of being business owners in California, she works a low-wage job in her store in Fountain Hills. Her story broke my heart. I made my decision based on her story, and if it's the last thing I do, I am not going to let them California my Fountain Hills. I called my friend and told him, "I'm in it. I'm going to win, and I'm going to retire as well." Through hard work, help with my Fountain Hills neighbors, and with God willing, I will be your next town council person, because Fountain Hills is worth fighting for.
Cindy.
Why am I running now? Because we need clear-thinking, fact-based citizens to step up and represent us. I believe I am that kind of person. I have a proven record as someone who can listen to, advocate for, make hard decisions, and represent others. I will do that for Fountain Hills. My top priority is continuing to provide the kind of interesting and stimulating life experiences that our citizens have come to expect. This town has more services and opportunities going on than most big cities. I was shocked when I moved here from Seattle at all the things that there are to do in this town. It's a fun place. One of my top priorities would be the completion of our Planet Dark Sky Observatory. I think that would put Fountain Hills on the map nationally, and it would draw tourists to support our businesses. As evidenced by this year's town survey, it's obvious that citizens are happy with our town's living experiences. I would continue to fulfill their expectations. I think people are coming up with fake problems for our town, and my feeling is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
All right. We'll move on to question number five. And that's what each of these folks expect to accomplish. If we fast-forward to the end of your term, four years, what do you hope to have accomplished in this role? And we'll start with Brenda.
Thank you. As a Republican and a low-tax conservative, I will do anything to avoid raising taxes during my term, period. I would also like to see massive improvements to our roads and modernized infrastructure. But of critical importance, and I know this election cycle has been very divisive, I would like to bring healing to our town. We have a small slice of heaven here, and I've seen too much bickering and fighting in partisan politics. I think it's gotten out of hand. It's no secret I have already reached out to the leadership on both sides, and I've tried to be a voice of reason. We need a leader that can unite us for the common good. We need to get behind what we're doing right now. As a member of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, we are tasked with many important missions: safety and security, search and rescue, mass casualty disasters, pollution response, homeland security, recreational voting safety. And the auxiliary of getting the mission accomplished is our only goal. We come from different political parties, races, and genders, et cetera, but we must pull together for the common good after this election. I want to be the one voice that has a vision to get us all to do our best to Fountain Hills. We need to meet each other, talk to each other, because we all want the same things: to work, to live, to retire in this magnificent town. Let's talk. Let's reason together, because working as a team, we can accomplish anything. This might be a difficult goal, but I don't think it's impossible.
Al.
So my vision for Fountain Hills for four years, I expect to see a vibrant downtown, regular pop-up community events, some big, some small, some sponsors, some organizations by the town, more American flags, people waving at each other, less like Portland, Seattle, and San Francisco, and more like a May area. So the grid here is a real treat for us. But I want to see more small events. What about like a monthly Wine Pottin' Wednesdays for adults to enjoy a glass of wine after a day at work in overall the Avenue of Commerce? I'm Carter. So what about having Motor Monday? What about family-friendly pet nights on the Avenue of Commerce? I can think of child-friendly Dean Nights. My vision is for a town, a community, to share hosting these events, but also eventually letting the businesses, the chamber, and the people themselves just take them over and just surprise us with how creative they can be with just community events in our town. just surprise us with how creative they can be with just community events in our town. Other towns have done this, so this is not reinventing the wheel. Things for people to do in our town and also for a reason for visitors to come to our shops, more like Fountain Hills should be. That's what I have a vision for, and that's what I expect to see four years from now.
Basically, my path will follow the direction that's been taken by our current town council. They're doing a great job. For example, they directed us safely through a pandemic. They have made many infrastructure and parks improvements. They beautifully remodeled this community center. They adhere to our desire to remain a small town. They are addressing our road repairs, and the town budget is in the black. What more could a town hope for? Oh yeah, they accomplished it all in a nonpartisan manner. I would hope that at the end of my four-year term, that year's town survey would still show that 98% of us continue to be happy, living in Fountain Hills.
I hope that my time in office will be looked back on as someone that kept their door open. I want you to remember me as someone that can call if you have a problem, someone that's going to listen and do the necessary work to get your problem solved, and if I can't do it on my own, then I'll find a person that will. I intend to mark the beginning of a turning point for Fountain Hills, a turn toward better collaboration and transparency, improved relationships with our business owners and residents, and actually accomplishing the goals that we've spoken about since I was a little girl. I intend to be known as the person on council that you know you can call if you have a problem. I also want to be remembered as one of the council members to create a step-by-step plan based on the feedback from our Streets Advisory Board Committee to fix our roads issues without creating another maintenance backlog by doing so. A team player that intended to ensure the best possible outcome for the most amount of people, which is what I believe local government is all about. Another piece in my decision to run for office was a simple question. How can we expect to attract more successfully young people to Fountain Hills if their perspective is not and has never been represented on our town council? But in order to gain that representation, someone had to step up, and I hope that Fountain Hills will be behind me in that decision.
All right, this will be the sixth and final of the scripted questions. This one relates to town branding and marketing. What specifically does the town Fountain Hills need to focus on in regards to branding and marketing efforts? How would you like to see Fountain Hills defined? And we'll start with Cindy.
I want to see Fountain Hills defined as the most beautiful, happy, healthy, satisfying, and safe place to live and play in Arizona. The town is considering branding our area as a health and wellness recreational destination. I think that's a great idea. We already have the basics in place. We have gorgeous parks with our fountain. We have hiking and mountain biking trails. We have medical facilities and spas. We have many events and activities. Our town is already a place where mind, soul, and body can find the stimulation they desire. We just need to market that concept so we can attract folks to our recreational and tourist activities. My plan is for a thriving town with continued high property taxes, happy residents, and successful businesses.
As I walk the town and meet with hundreds of residents, a constant refrain is that we are not currently business-friendly and are known for burdensome regulations and red tape. It is imperative that the mayor and the council make efforts to drive a younger, more family-friendly demographic to Fountain Hills, which would increase school enrollment and local business patrons. We've struggled to accept that our community is in a dangerous position. We need to choose if we want to keep and encourage the amenities and services we currently enjoy from the town, our chamber, and our businesses. I firmly believe that we do. But in order to market ourselves as family-friendly, we need to ensure that families have activities to enjoy. Now, marketing is a difficult topic because, of course, even as a councilwoman, there is no magic wand I can wave to bring in the businesses and the families exactly as I envision them. But what we can do is allow for an environment that encourages their entry, become more collaborative, and work with the residents to identify ways to say Fountain Hills is open for business.
Brenda?
Thank you. We are so fortunate to have a great reputation as a destination town because of our magnificent fountain, natural beauty, hiking trails, and great businesses that made Fountain Hill a true gem. Our reputation is not just local, but is worldwide. Our vice mayor Jerry Fredell recently participated in the Global Ties Arizona. Our town hosted an international group of mayors. Very impressive. In my opinion, we have a good thing going, and I would not change what we currently mark ourselves to quote. We already have a great brand. Do you recall Coca-Cola rebranding and introducing the new Coke way back around 20 years ago? Wow, that was a disaster. That was a major PR nightmare, and it cost them credibility, and it cost them customers, and it cost them a lot of money. Why try to improve on something that's working so well? One more thing about the rebranding advocates I have to warn you about. We better watch out for our curses on our walls. Rebranding usually means throwing a bunch of money at something and seeing whether it works or not. At this stage left, and the consultants and experts from Scottsdale who are going to tell us what to do to market ourselves successfully, no thanks. As a conservative, I tend to stay with things that already work. I am risk averse and I'm a budget hog. As a conservative, I believe in individual freedom. I believe in limited government, a rule of law, peace through the strengths, responsible, of fiscal responsibility, free markets, and human dignity for all people. Let's not change things for the sake of change. Let's keep what we're doing. Thank you.
So did everyone here know that there's already two marketing advertising professionals in this race for town council? That's true, Brenda and myself, not only have a background in marketing and advertise, are professionals and experts in the field. Now, the town Fountain Hills, do they need to rebrand? And what I would actually suggest is that, and my advice would be, that actions speak louder than words. So with marketing and advertising, we already have, we already have a brand here. We have the fountain. We have the views. We have dark skies. I say embrace them and communicate it, because there are tourism programs that are already out there and willing to help. There's already methods, mechanisms in place to bring people here to enjoy our town as it is. I would also suggest that we use these resources and focus in them on only two priorities. One is going to be attracting people from over the hill, and we want them to come here and shop, we want them to come here and dine, and then the other priority that I would have would be to fill in our vacant storefronts. So the visitors from over the hill, they're going to spend money here, that's going to generate a sales tax revenue, also keeps our local businesses profitable and healthy. Filling vacant storefronts prevents them from becoming plain. Higher activity rates also bring a synergy that helps all the local businesses. And I'm wrapping up with John Candy once said, "As a rising child, tide lists all boats."
All right, that concludes round one of our questions. I thank you all for pretty much sticking to the timeline at 7:30, which is exactly where we wanted to be. That's going to give us more time for some of the audience questions that were submitted online. In this section, again, you don't know what the questions are, but you're going to have two minutes to respond to them if you want to take that question. Two minutes for round two. So the first question of round two, and for the audience, yeah, we'll plow this straight through, there's no break tonight. We'll be out of here by 8:30. First question is, and came from someone probably in this room, opinions vary on the condition of our roads. You've all alluded to this in previous comments, but what do you really think about the condition of our roads? How can we generate additional revenue if you think it is a serious concern, or if you think you have our kind of climate apocalypse? Let's sum that as one. We'll start with Cindy.
Our roads are horrible. We have neighborhood roads that are almost damaging to your car as you drive through. But three times, we turned down a primary property tax to take care of those roads. They would have been all done now. You can't have something for free. We have to either pay for the roads or deal with bad roads. Now, we're trying to use our sales tax to cover that, and the sales tax needs to be used for other things too, so you know, you just have to figure out something else. Maybe we'll need to go for a bond. I don't know. I know everybody's against taxes, but a bond is finite. When the town turned down the property tax, they said, well, we'd go for a bond because that's finite. Well, maybe that's what we need to do. We do have the Road Commission Group with something like 312, I don't know, a huge, huge amount of experience working on it, and we'll just have to see what they come up with.
Our roads need a lot of work. We recently had a presentation from the Streets Advisory Committee, and they mentioned that the 60% that are community roads, not main veins, so not Palisades or Shakers or Oros, those community roads have been left on the back burner for quite some time, some since our town was incorporated. And so, of course, this is an issue. It's a 60 to 80 million dollar backlog that we're facing, and that's an estimate. We won't have the full number until later in this year. What we need to do first and foremost again is identify wants versus needs in our budget, type in our belt. As we've been saying, we need to find out how much money we really have to go into this and also our prioritization over several years. We're not going to be able to write a $60 million check to fix all the roads right away, but what we can do is put together a multi-year plan, figure out what roads need to be addressed that year, and what roads are highest priorities, so those ones that haven't been done since our town was incorporated will go first probably. We'll have that planned for several years, and then we'll know how much money we need for each year. We're budgeting. And we cannot in good conscience ask the people of Fountain Hills for a blank check without knowing exactly what we need. So that's why we say this is number one. There may need to be a bond initiative. I don't want to sit here and lie to you. It may be possible. But in order to know that, we need to look at what we really have first.
Brenda?
Thank you. Like was mentioned in the previous question, we've got a budget of $46 million. So we've got money, okay? It's just where we're spending it and what we're doing with it. As a business owner, when I needed money, I would just look at expenditures that are out there right now. I know for a fact that the Mariposa County Sheriff's Department, God bless you guys, they just pulled three detectives to Fountain Hills and put them downtown. How can we pay them a full ticket for partial service? We have to look at all the money we're spending right now, and we have to do an analysis to figure out whether we can save, save, save. That's the first thing. The second thing is, and I hate to give the Chinese Communist Party credit, but when they look at governance, they look at five years, 10 years, 25 years down the road, they figure out how to get things done. In America, if we look at the next election cycle, okay, and so generally, we're spending the money on those stuff we want to have right now to impress our constituents, and we're not doing the tough calls and saying, you know what, we're not going to spend that money on that roundabout, we're not going to spend that money on that part. We're going to start allocating a fund to build roads in the future, and we're going to put money in it, and is it going to take one or two years? No, it might take five or 10 years. But if we have a plan, and we tell the people we have a plan, then they'll say, okay, I'm with you, you got a plan. That's what it's going to take. We've got the money, we have to tighten our budget, and we have to stick to a five or 10-year plan and just explain to the people, if you want better roads, we're going to have to tighten our belt, and we're going to have to do the things to get those roads that people want. It's not that hard, actually. Thank you.
Alan?
So let's start with the numbers for a minute. We mentioned a $46 million budget, just so people know, that's a 10% increase in spending. The commission that's talking about the roads is suggesting between $60 and $70 million backlog fixing the roads, but that's one more 10 years, so $67 million a year. So if we look at what we have, we're basically fully funded about $6 million for roads this year, so that's half our 10% decrease is going to roads. I don't know, maybe all of that 10% increase should go on the roads, so that's a decision there. So also something that I would suggest is that we go through the budget line by line and eliminate the spending that we do not need and only focus on just the stuff we need, like our roads. So I know that that's not happening right now because I have a budget right here. Ladies and gentlemen, this is the budget right here. There are not line items in here. So there's neat little graphs, and I probably did randomly pull up one here. You can see there's neat little graphs in here, but there's no line items in here. Do the people in this audience know that we spend $20,000 a year on hobbies? Do the people in this room know that we spend $75,000 a year on for an organization that supposedly helps the homeless but actually encourages more people to be homeless? These are the same bad ideas that did not work with Phoenix, did not work in San Francisco, and yet we give them $75,000 a year for this service. If we add up $20,000 a year, $35,000 a year, $150,000 for a study for a roundabout, $400,000 for a shade structure, guess what? Let's start tonight, and it's a real one. And all we got to do is really go through that budget and do what we're responsible to do. Unfortunately, currently, we give the town manager a blank check, so he gives us a little bit, you know, $2 million here, $4 million there, but we don't go through the lines. That's irresponsible, and you know what? As a city councilman, I would never approve a budget like that. We need to have line items, we need to go over them, and we need to really start at a zero basis question here, and that's how we're going to fix our roads and do it well.
Thank you. This next question, again, I'm going to ask the audience, stay quiet. This is what I'm calling the elephant in the room question. Each of the candidates is going to get a different question specific to them based on a whole bunch of negativity, and this is going to be your opportunity to respond to that negativity that shows up in the paper each and every week. And Brenda, I'd like you to go first. Way too many articles or letters to the editor on the discrepancy between post guard and post guard auxiliary, so set the record straight for everyone here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. That's a very good point. If you read the Fountain Hills Times today, they issued a correction about the allegation that was written up by me. It's the longest correction that they've ever made in the newspaper. Mr. John Parks supposedly wrote that article. There is no Mr. John Parks. Somebody else committed a fraud on the citizens of Fountain Hills and on the newspaper. And so they issued a correction on that, which is unfortunate. The Fountain Hills alternative is an e-magazine with a very limited number of subscribers misidentified my service record. I am in the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary, which is connected to the Department of Homeland Security. As I mentioned earlier, I won a honorary service award from the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary earlier this year. This is something I would never run away from. I'm extremely proud of my service to the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary and the Office of Homeland Security. I simply cannot be responsible for what people say when they don't vote me and they don't ask me for input on the article. I'm going to be next, until my fifth, I'll be in the Arizona Republic. I was in a publication called the Tenpin Express. I was in a publication called Fountain Hills Alternative. There's been a number of articles written about me. I can't guarantee the veracity of them. And so they mistakenly said that the Coast Guard Auxiliary was in the military, which it's not, and as soon as they read that article, I wrote the paper, and a correction was issued immediately. And so it's unfortunate that the politics has gotten that vicious in that derby because I'm proud of my service. And they had, why would I run away from the fact... And I had, "Why would I run away from the fact that I'm winning meritorious service awards for Homeland Security?" I'm proud of Homeland Security. Matter of fact, Homeland Security wanted to call me up two weeks ago to go to the border. And I told them I'm running for office and I cannot make it, okay? And so I'm proud of my service. I'm proud of what I do for my country. And thank you for addressing that tonight.
Next up will be Alan. And this, there's way too many letters to the editor again regarding your service back in Illinois. So let the townspeople know about the history back in the state of Illinois.
Yeah, I'm so glad that we want to talk about ethics, especially when it's another candidate on the stage that has some serious questions to answer. A campaign here has multiple ethics violations and even bullied the lane to my left. So when I was in Illinois, I took on some of the most powerful and corrupt political interests in the nation. And of course, they attacked me. And that's always was, was a political attack. Have you ever heard of unanimous voice vote? When the Speaker of the House says the words and the ayes have it? So everyone is marked as a yes vote, no matter all the rooting and hollering. Ladies and gentlemen, tell us what? It was nothing more than a unanimous voice vote. Now, some accusers here in Fountain Hills, if they actually read the source documents, they would read statements from the legislative inspector general like, quote, "Found no evidence of malicious intent with regard of operation of representative skill or the switch." Quote, "It's a common practice." Quote, "I found no evidence of malicious intent." And quote, "I am closing my investigation without finding a complaint." The Ethics Committee in the Illinois House of Representatives and the Inspector General of Illinois, Legislative Inspector General, quashed this. Quash. So since that's cleared up, what about the ethics violations from the Katorka campaign and her campaign manager? We'd all like to read the executive session minutes from April 12th when the council discussed these violations. If there's nothing to hide, the liberal majority in the council should release those minutes. That begs the question, what is the liberal majority trying to hide? If there is nothing to hide, release the minutes. So I want to see a front page headline next week saying, "If there is nothing to hide, release the minutes."
Next question will be for Cindy. And if you know what's coming, leftists ruin towns. You've been somewhat under attack here this evening for parapolitical positions. So this is your two minutes to respond to those charges.
Well, I'm not really sure how to define leftist or how people define leftist because I'm just me. I'm pretty moderate. I love people. I want people taken care of. Yes, I'm a Democrat. I'm a proud Democrat. And if that's a bad thing, I'm sorry. But, you know, there's, I don't know, I don't like the idea of homeless people ruining our towns and they're saying things that I'm supposedly going to bring that to Fountain Hills and make us like Portland and Seattle. That's crazy. That's crazy talk. You know, I don't even know how to refute this except come and talk to me. Talk to anybody who knows me. I am probably the most easygoing, moderate person you would ever find. So, you know, I'm not, as you've heard tonight, I love this town. I'm not going to do anything that would ruin the town.
Okay, Hannah, the issue is youth and inexperience. So the question is, help the townspeople here understand, again, why you're running to a background and why you feel more like in this position.
Thank you. And I get it, I do. You look up here and you think, "What the heck is this girl in her twenties doing up on this stage?" I get it. But I was born and raised here in Fountain Hills. I know the cycle of constant people coming to the council, making their voice heard. And then it having to be a much bigger deal than it should have been. Primary property tax, sign ordinance, sober living homes, it seemed to be the detox center. Take your pick. We've seen this pattern on and on throughout my life in Fountain Hills. Secondly, as I mentioned earlier tonight, people say very often that we want to attract more youth to Fountain Hills. Well, as a business owner and a young person, I think that my perspective should be represented on council. There's a Bible verse that says, "Majority of vice counsel is how you form the best decision." And that means different perspectives. It means different walks of life. I understand that I might not have served on the town council before, but neither has anyone else here. Actually, I heard that I think Alan was on town council, but most of us here. I need three, so pick three. Don't look down on me because of my age, but let me set an example in thought, word, speech. That's also a Bible verse. Look down on me because you disagree with me on issues, not because of the face you see. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next question revolves around our local sales tax. I think really our only locally controlled tax is our sales tax. Question is, should we want to raise it? Should we work to lower it? Or should we just leave it the same? And why? And you share with Alan.
Well, the sales tax is a use tax. So you can decide, one, where you want to shop, but two, what you want to buy. So it's actually probably one of the most fair taxes there is because you have the choice to either not buy it or you buy it for yourself. Now, Arizona has fairly high sales taxes compared to rest of the nation. But that is because we have very low income taxes here. And actually, I do look forward to in a couple of years from now, we have a 0% tax rate here in Arizona. This is our vast majority of our income for the town, our revenue for the town. We do get some sales, I'm sorry, some shared revenue from state and a few other income streams, but that is our big one. I would suggest that we can leave it as is, but after we go line by line through the budget, maybe we'll find enough savings that we can lower it incrementally. But that's something that we can adjust and that's also something that can change very quickly. There is something difficult about sales tax though, is because it has to close. So right now, we're entering recession. This is, who knows how long this recession will last, but inevitably, the sales tax revenue will probably go down in this recessionary time. It's also why it was probably a mistake to increase our budget by 10%. We should probably have held something back just in case, which was probably going to happen. But that's possibly need to have a rainy day fund. Because if we're having a slow time, like upcoming time, that's something that we'll have a little less money coming in. During our times that we have more money coming in, it doesn't mean that we can go crazy and start spending all this money. It just means that we have a little bit more rainy day fund. We have to prepay some of the debts on fixing our streets. We just want to be wise about that. It's a little bit more difficult, but it's not impossible. And this is something that I think a few of the entrepreneurs and people that are experts running businesses like us here on the stage can do for the people of town.
Erin?
So again, we cannot in good conscience ask the people of Fountain Hills for a blank check before we've done the work to increase our trust with residents and also gone through the budget line by line. We've said it 100 times because it's how you solve 100 problems. Once we know exactly where we can and cannot cut costs, once I've gone through the contracts that the town has entered into, then we know the real amount of money we actually have. I don't believe we'll need to increase sales tax. I know that we don't want a property tax. We like not having one. And maybe Alan's right. Maybe there will be a future opportunity to lower that sales tax. But the reality is, is we need to go through our budget. We need to sort out the needs response. We need to go through our contracts. We need to hold MCO responsible for we're currently paying for those detectives and not giving that service. We need to fully go through our agreements and see how much money we truly have. Because right now, we don't really know.
Interesting question. It keeps coming back to this town, whether we're a business friendly town or whether we're not. Our tax money is not raised by property taxes. It's raised by revenue from people selling hot dogs and jewelry in our stores. We have a lot of empty storefronts that are vacant that could provide the taxes we need. We have the Target Center with the homeless people and the overnight parking and the pollution and the dirt. Maybe if we clean that up, maybe people would start moving in there. Like the Dollar Store did, a few other businesses. Maybe if we cleaned it up and made it healthy, okay? Maybe if we were friendly with the Barclays developers of eight or seven years ago, they just, the town just renegotiated another 8,000 square feet of commercial property and now they're that, but there's going to be hundreds of people that are going to live there. And then they have to be snowbirds, they're year to year long residents, still be paying taxes all year long. And then the businesses underneath will be paying taxes all year long. That's how we solve this problem. It's not that hard. It's really not that hard. We have to incentivize businesses to go to these older storefronts that are a little bit dilapidated and say, "Give us a business plan. Show us what you're going to put there. Give us your plan and we will incentivize you. We will help pay for the improvements, okay? We've got the money. Instead of spending $4.5 million on the roundabout and stairs, why don't we cut checks to businesses to say, "If you move in there and you sell hot dogs, you sell jewelry, you do things, you do toy store." It solves itself. It really does. But it's going to take, at a town council, it's going to take leadership to solve these problems that they're easy to solve once you figure out the problem. And the problem is, is our current way we do business is not business friendly. We can solve it. It'll take a couple of years. People will come to Fountain Hills. Don't pay taxes. You want us to raise it?
Don't pay taxes. That's pretty good. Cindy?
I see, I'm trying to figure out where this go over the budget line by line is coming from. Our people go over the budget line by line. I've been in meetings where they go over the budget line by line. And then, and then there's this, we have to look into this and everything has to be transparent. Fountain Hills budget is online. Every person in here can go online and look it up. I don't understand, you know? This town is exceptionally transparent. And as far as sales tax, we've got to have sales tax. We want to keep our town nice. And I don't see even, okay, if you make the sales tax point 0.5% less than it is, I'm not going to drive to Target in Scottsdale to buy something because I get 0.025 whatever percent less on sales tax. I mean, gas is going to eat that up. So I just, I don't understand what the other candidates are talking about. Yes, we need sales tax. We need it where it is. There's been no proposal by the town council. And I've been going to meetings for two or three years about raising our sales tax. So I'm just trying to figure out what's going to happen here.
All right, I think we'll make this the last question submitted by the audience and then we'll let each of you make closing comments. So here's the final question. By law, Arizona local elections are nonpartisan. This election isn't anything but, seems to be in stark contrast to that approach. How, if at all, do you plan to unify the various factions within the town after this election? We'll start off the end.
I think there's a lot of hurt in this town. Let's go back to daybreak. Let's go back to sober living homes, permanent primary property tax, our mayor race four years ago. It gets partisan. I'm sorry to say it. But the reality is, is that any government position, there's a party behind the candidate. But the reality is, is that we're looking at the foundation of a person and how you believe they will govern. Do you want to pick someone who will be fiscally conservative or do you want to pick someone who will be fiscally liberal? That's kind of what it comes down to when it's a local election. And when we talk about bringing people together, that comes from listening. That comes from transparency. The recent survey of town residents, the number one complaint was transparency. And yes, our budget is online, but it is not line itemed. We do not see where the money's being spent, just the categories in which it is spent. That's what we're talking about when we say item by item. And that's how you build trust with the community. If you have that information online, anything I miss, you can give me a call and we'll be responsible. I'm not going to ask for your voter registration before I take your advice. But we're trying to be honest with you on who we are ourselves because we're asking to be hired for a job. Thank you.
Cindy?
Well, someone who tried to run on a nonpartisan campaign, I was shocked when I was confronted by, okay, there are three people over, three people in, you know, and she's a Democrat. So I didn't know how to deal with that. I will say that I'm a person who gets along with anybody who can represent all people. And I don't want to, I don't want to hurt Brenda's chances, but Brenda and I get along really well and we're on two sides of the, totally on two sides of our filter of living our life. But, and I see that on the town council all the time. I mean, we have huge differences of opinion, but they seem to gel and they make the right decisions for the town. So, you know, I don't understand ramping up divisiveness, which I see happening quite a bit here. I don't want it to happen. I'm kind of the kind of person who really dislikes that kind of thing. So, I don't know, I don't know how to fix it.
Alan?
So, everyone here is partisan. Everyone on the stage here is partisan. Some people have said some things online that really are a lot different than what they're saying on the stage. There's three of us that are telling the truth and there's one that is not. So I just give you an example of the decorum that some people have in this race. And it really shows. And that is, that's just the case of how it is. So I will also mention that there is a former president of ours that used to be a Democrat and then he changed parties to Republican. And that is why I'm writing. And one thing he said, he was joking when he said this, but he said, "This is so much that liberals are ignorant. It's just that they don't know so many things that aren't so." And this is one of the cases. The majority of the people in Fountain Hills-
Be quiet. Hey, it's me. Please be quiet so we do not clear the room. Please. Okay, five-minute recess. Please, MCO, go clear the room. Thank you all for coming. We will see you the rest of it on the recording.
Take out the people who are disruptive. Take out every-
Exactly. Like we were told.
Never have a meeting more than an hour and never try to say more than one thing. I live by that. Good to see you, John.
Oh, I'm sorry, I got a red light. I forgot to go like that.
He's all right. Thank you, good to see you.
Please clear the room. Please continue to clear the room. Thank you for attending, we will record it and release the recording. You will have a chance to clear the rest. Please clear the room. Now, we're going to finish on, on video. We almost made it. We have almost made it, I think. So, thank you, officers. Can we close the door? The checker, are we good to go to continue recording? Okay. Alan, I'll have you for standing, I'm sorry for the interruption, unless you're finished.
No, the only thing, the only thing I will comment and note of is that the budget really isn't online, so even today, I print this up, up, and I have to go to a link, and you put your email address in there, and you get another email sent, it takes up to three hours to get it. It was faster than that, but I, I, I just think it's a little interesting that someone is telling us that, oh, you know, the taxes may not be high and things like that, doesn't actually know if the budget isn't online. And I just think that that's something that the county should know. That's all.
Brenda, you, you still got to go, you need me to repeat the question?
Uh, yes, would you please?
It was the fact that elections are nonpartisan, what would you do to unify the various factions?
Oh, okay, very, very good. Yeah, I, I do believe that nonpartisan elections are a, a good thing for the local municipal elections. It shouldn't be happening this partisan like it has lately and like it has tonight. I think I'm one of the few candidates that ever since the beginning of this election cycle, I have reached out to both sides, and I'm trying to live the voice of reason. I don't think that's a big secret. I, I do believe that reasonable people can reason together and can form a consensus and, and work, work together. It is, I think it's unfortunate that this has told us how this take it. If elected, I, I have promised the people right now that I'm going to work together with everybody in, in leadership in both parties, and the town council, and, and in the mayor's office, to, 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 to try to see things reasonably and try to work together. At Fountain Hills, like I mentioned earlier, it's a beautiful city, we've got so much to offer, we're an international community, we're a destination community, but we've got to learn how to get along together, okay? That's very important. So, if you ask me, let's, let's just go back to listening to each other and trying to get each other a little respect.
With that, we are going to go ahead and move to closing comments. So the order will be what you see as closing comments, so I apologize that you get to, to go twice in a row, but closing comments, you each get two minutes to make your statement, and Brenda, we will begin with you.
Okay, thank you very much. Normally in closing comments, they tell you, "Talk about yourself, talk about what you're going to do, make it about yourself." I, I'm not going to do that today. Again, my closing, it's funny that this happened tonight, because this should be an nonpartisan election, and one of the things that actually broke my heart was the fact that when the liberal ladies, and I'm not sure if it's Cindy or, or Ginny, but they started running these one done ads, and I asked myself, "Why are they asking their own voters to cancel themselves?" The thoughtful message should be, "Listen to the candidates and choose the best three that are available." Isn't that what good citizenship is all about? It's childish and it's foolish and it's immature to ask people not to vote. Recall the suffragette who granted women the right to vote, the civil rights laws, overcoming general poll taxes literacy test. The Democratic leadership is asking their constituents to voluntarily give up the right to vote over politics and to cancel themselves. And I think it's shameful, and I think it's un-American, because we, we can't pick the best three, whoever they think they are, as our civic responsibility to not just one and done. There's three people, we have different views, we think different things, so just pick the best three. Sometimes you have to hold your nose. If you allow me to serve on the town council, I will trust the judgment of the people rather than those who would rule over us. I would never ask you not to vote. I would never have the arrogance to think that I know what's best for you. The current administration, I believe, is out of touch with what is important to the average Fountain Hills resident, that's why I'm running. I think electing a new mayor and town council that reflects more the will of the people will cure many of our ills. There's so much on the line. I have the good judgment and wisdom of an attorney at law, the work ethic and insight of the business owner, and the discipline and integrity of the United States Coast Guard Auxiliary. I promise, I honor, I loyalty, and my best efforts to serve you well. To win, I need your help. If you want more information about me, go to www.brendadatvote. God bless America, and God bless Fountain Hills, and thank you very much.
Next up, Cindy.
Okay, I guess I need to explain the one and done in my closing statement. How that came about was when we saw that there were three candidates versus one candidate, and that, that, that you guys were running as a trio, and that there are frankly, a lot more Republican voters in Fountain Hills than Democrats. A person who knows a political pollster said, "We need to try one and done, because that's the only way Cindy will have a chance to win a seat on town council." Because if someone votes for Cindy and two others, and then the Republicans all vote for three, 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 she has no chance. And so that's where that came about, when this election became totally partisan. So I apologize, because, you know, it is not a good thing to ask people to throw away their vote, but, you know, it's, I would like to be on town council, I would like to serve this town. My closing thought is this, for decades, I have watched people run for town council and get on town council, and I've seen a variety of people win. Sometimes I fretted and said, "Oh no, not that one." And then they get on town council, and I watched as they transformed. People seem to grow into that position. I've seen them as they learn about what you can do, and what you can't do, and what's legal, and what's not legal, and I've seen them vote for the good of the town rather than along their previous lines of beliefs. So I send my message out that I have confidence that that will happen again.
Erin?
Well, a lot of my closing remarks were thank yous. I don't know if it will mean the same without everyone here, but thank you, Betsy, for hosting in the chamber. We appreciate all of your hard work. Tom, thank you for being our timer, and thank you to our moderator, Tom, to Orlando. I'm grateful for this opportunity for us to share our ideas, and I hope that people will reach out to me if they want more details on that. It's hard with 90 seconds, and so if you want more details, if you want to provide your perspective, please do reach out to me. And to kind of address the events of tonight, I'm sorry that all of this happened, I am. But when we have people that are saying that they're nonpartisan, they're independent, and they really aren't, it's frustrating to have to deal with that when we're trying to be honest about who we are. I will not run or hide from who I am. I stand by each and every one of my beliefs. I'm here to help my hometown become more fiscally conservative. I hope to attract good families, and most importantly, I want to encourage transparency, rebuild relationships with our chamber, our business owners, and our residents. A vote for Toad means no hidden agendas or power grabs. Thank you.
Finally, Alan.
So we're in here, and I have the proposed 2023 budget, so the camera can see it, see two Rolando's in the camera though over there. We really do need to go line by line through that budget and find that extra one to two million dollars a year, and that's all it is, it's only one to two million dollars a year to fix that road backlog. Now sadly, this budget does not address, address line items. You know, I did show a picture of the league graphs and, and pie charts, you know, that is great, but that is not the actual line items that we need to go anywhere. We can do better. Did you know that, you know, we spend $20,000 here on lobbyist? Did you know that we spent $75,000 here on this homeless organization that actually promotes failed policies, that actually make homelessness worse and actually encourage it? I'm not saying it brings it to our home, our town, but it brings more of it to our family, and it does have an effect on us. So I have a little bit of experience in the public sector and a lot of the private sector, joking horse, but I'm a successful entrepreneur. I was at the previous town council, and I've offered over 100 bills to Illinois legislature. I have been an activist for the National Motors Association for 12 or 13 years now. I have experience in transportation, roadways, and intersection engineering. I have provided expert testimony to the Illinois Senate, the Texas House of Representatives, and the Arizona Senate. I did not move to Fountain Hills to run for office again. I chose Fountain Hills because of the beauty and its Mayberry-like small-town feel. I chose Fountain Hills over Scottsdale or Tempe. And I am only running because there's a current liberal majority here that does not represent the values of our conservative town. And I will not let our town slowly slide into California. I will enthusiastically support Hannah and Brenda in this August primary, and my name is Alan Skiliford, a conservative reformer, and I hope to win your vote.
Thank you, and just we'll let Betsy wrap up. For those watching online, August 2nd is the election day. Betsy?
Yes, thank you so much. Thank you to Cindy Couture, Brenda Calabianakis, Alan Skiliford, and Hannah Toad for participating in our town council campaign this evening. Special appreciation goes out to SRP for their sponsorship, special appreciation goes out to FACCA Civic Affairs Committee and for their partnership with Michael Hoops for moderation, and finally, our town keeper, Tom Lindsay from Toastmasters. And in closing, I was going to thank everyone for attending, which it would have been nice to have done that, but we do, I appreciate the fact that we have such a robust and passionate residential crowd, and so I'm glad that we're able to finish this way, and the recording will be put out in the next few days on the Chambers YouTube channel, and we'll also make an announcement on Facebook, on our Chambers Facebook page. So thank you all very, very much. You all want, each and every one of you, want what's best for our town, and you as one of our neighbors and as a resident are really, the volunteerism that you're putting for to even run for a council position is wonderful, and so I thank each and every one of you, and have a great 4th of July coming up. Thank you.